Immediately, so that would be um three point three.
Um Tricia just said we have to um say that all over again.
Oh, sorry.
Um we can kind of eliminate everything I said because well, that was just.
Into, yes.
So we are, so we are back from uh exec session, I was frankly looking for uh this. Number three point two approval or modification of the tentative agenda, so is there a modification?
Yes, there is modification, there is a resolution, that will be item three point three.
Uh okay.
And that's the resolution.
And uh there's five of us and uh.
Hybrid.
No.
No, 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 she'll read it.
Okay.
So there are um there are all five of us are here because we are all in person. Um that was part of the conversation earlier and um. And without objection, we're uh we modified the agenda, everything else is fine, Dr. Brown. We haven't like messed with anything else, so. So Maura, um.
So.
Immediately you're going to do something.
I'm going to read this resolution. Whereas the Ithaca City School District recognizes the service of Rob Ainsley on the Board of Education for fifteen years, and elected board president fourteen times. And whereas his leadership of the district's audit, facilities, finance committees, and business acumen have provided substantial enhancements to our educational programs and increased student achievement, while the district experienced considerable reductions in state aid and the two thousand and N fiscal crisis. And whereas his expertise was instrumental in the passage of two one hundred plus million capital project bond, resulting in significant improvements to the school district's infrastructure, athletic facilities, and teaching and learning spaces. And whereas his unwavering support of meaningful curriculum implementation has meant the advent and growth of the ICSD anti-maritalization curriculum implementation throughout the school district. And whereas his active support for the enhancement of co-curricular opportunities, increased access, and the overall numbers of students participating in before and after school music and athletic program, particularly students from, from traditionally marginalized populations. And whereas we acknowledge as many contributions as the liaison to Enfield Elementary School, the VTA Council, and the Public Education Initiative. And whereas, while serving as president of the Board of Education, his alma mater, Ithaca High School received national recognition for academic achievement, including gold designation from U S News and World Report for being in the top two percent of high schools in the nation. Award from Newsweek for being one of the nation's best STEM high school, forty eighth nationally, and honor roll from the College Board for increasing diversity and achievement in the school's highest level course offerings. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ithaca City School District Board of Education recognizes and deeply appreciates the selfless service of Rob Ainsley, and wishes him well in all future endeavors. And further, that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded and included in the minutes of the Ithaca City Board of Education on this twenty eighth day of the month of June in the year twenty twenty two.
Let's talk to you, pick them out for more, I gave you a hug, but you got a mask on.
Yes.
You shouldn't be that public.
Right. I have a cold. I actually did test negative. But um so I move uh item three point three, resolution recognizing the service of Rob Ainsley. Second. Uh second.
What happened seconded um.
I think second.
Tricia called the role, I think.
But um how um how do I vote, how do I vote for it myself, I mean I don't.
Oh, and then it wouldn't pass, so.
Yeah, so.
You should vote for it.
No, no, no.
Why don't you vote for it, same, yes.
Well, before you vote on this, um I will, I will only go for it uh due to one fact that um that was, that was a great list, but that's really just a great list of what a tremendous team has done over the past fifty years. And uh this is uh being on school board, frankly, uh being a part of an organization, this is a team sport. It's not the, you can't have, it's boy, you can come on or as an administrator, I'm gonna eliminate the achievement gap, you said that, Dr. Brown, when we hired you, and it's like, really, okay, well, they better hire you, so. To see, you think you can do it, uh but you find out very early on that uh when you, if you focus on the kids and then what they need, everything else starts to fall into place. And when you do that, you find out that there's other great people. Lily, Amanda, Amanda, Mary, Dr. Brown, Tricia, Bob, I didn't forget, and Dan, and so more. Funders, sorry, I'm here behind, uh. So uh you know, it's uh this team and prior, you know, prior professionals, prior boards. We are a nine-member board, there's five of us here today, uh but it really takes all nine, and it takes a great team. And uh and that's a lot to um, that's a lot to take now, and I, I certainly appreciate that. It didn't, right, nothing happens overnight, and that's why it takes a long time to do great things. I just made all that up, so.
Ronald, Rob Ainsley.
All right, yes.
Eldred Harris.
Absolutely.
Morelaine.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Patricia Wadward.
Yes.
There's lovely comments. You know, this is uh, this is very nice, it is a, it is a, well, it's a plaque with the resolution thing, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, everybody.
Thank you, Judy.
Well, I hope the punctuation is right.
So um.
The policy section did not get this.
So we uh, we will jump into public comment, but I would uh, I would only, um I would get in, I'm not gonna get in trouble, but uh Judy, my wife Judy is here. Uh I think this is a, is this the second board meeting you've ever been to in fifteen years? Our son did go through, I mean, no, he went through at the uh district.
Why does she have to be here, you're here every time.
Right, it was the Biden conquer, Judy did all the PTA stuff at Enfield, like, you know, I didn't do that. I mean, that was all Judy and Bonnie and Denise and their great crew at Enfield when Robbie was going through, just a good group of kids. But there's good, great group of parents that were involved, because they, they invested themselves in the schools, that's why we really wanna provide that opportunity, you know, to be involved in kids' education, uh but have great people teach them, that's a couple. But um thanks, dear, for um letting me go to all these meetings, or frankly, encouraging me not to be home very much. Um because we've been married a long time, so um uh but well, uh there's many nights that I will be home. Thank you, so. But uh, but thank you, Gary, so we're uh, we're gonna go on to um, uh enough of the mushy stuff, so we'll uh go on to the public comment and.
I got, I got, I got comments, I gotta make some comments, bro.
Uh well, we're gonna do public comment first, then you can talk.
Now, this is about you now, so, comments can come later, this is, I let this opportunity slide, um. All right, so. I think the, the plaque mentioned it, but it needs to be reread. Dr. Brown has several of us as board members go to speak to these burgeoning administrative teachers classes, and some of those administrators who he's taught, gone on to work for us, they've gone on to work for the state, it's a fantastic opportunity. And when Rob and I have been speaking to these groups, it occurs to me that they actually were aware of the all of the crises that you have to withstand in their roles. Right, and I think two of them were mentioned, the two thousand eight global financial collapse led to districts running less, what we call neighbors, losing dozens, in some cases hundreds, of employees. Because state just pulled the plug for us, and we know all the terms that maybe you never heard, gap elimination adjustment, all these weird financial tools. What we hired him out for, and the reason we selected him is because he was a master at teaching and learning. Not necessarily a wizard by finance. What a blessing that we had Rob Ainsley and Brad Granger on this board to provide financial device and stability, so we could cross that divide without being eviscerated. Right, so our sandwich is two pieces of bread on my board experience sandwich, already. Two thousand eight global financial collapse, and the two thousand and twenty global pandemic. And I would argue that this district managed to not just survive though, but to do okay. Right, the number of devices that we put in every kid's hands where they could practice and get familiar in digital, not natives, but comfortable with digital technology. Like that was partially because Rob and Brad allowed us that space to breathe, so as we focus on these other things, and not be counting beans in the sofa. But this community, can you imagine what this community would be if we had not prepared it? And the final, and the pandemic hit, and all of our students had to be virtual with no understanding of devices? We hadn't developed our technology department? In addition to the positive things we all talked about around, new buses, curriculum support, new ways of hiring folks. Let's all stop and really understand that at the basis of all that, it's a capacity to understand where the dimes are. If you hadn't had this man's support and his expertise, I'm not sure how we would pull this off. State comes around every year and looks at our facilities, every year. And I remember the first time they came, they said we were at a five hundred million dollar hole. And it's we needed five hundred million dollar boilerwork, and asbestos removal, roofing work, and everything you can wanna imagine. We haven't gotten to five hundred million, and we never will, but Rob and Brad put together two successive one hundred million dollar bonds, so we could get ahead of that. You look around at the other districts around us with that deferred maintenance, they haven't put the money in it, you've got kids operating dilapidated classes, right, and the student to teacher ratio is going up, now around twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven to one. Right, so just saying all this to say, this work is deeper than we get credit for. You'll never hear about these things I'm talking about, they won't be on the cover of the Ithaca whatever, I can't even say it, journalist straight face. But to recognize the multiple talents here, and I'm just excited and happy to be able to get credit where credit is due. Thank you, Mr. Ainsley.
Thanks, oh yeah, now, if we could, there's folks that would like to speak, so.
Right. Other folks who'd like to speak, uh our first speaker is Didier Argon, I hope, uh forgive me if I mispronounced it.
That's okay. Um so I came here to talk about the discussion on whether or not these meetings would remain hybrid. What I'm hearing is that that discussion already happened.
But you can certainly agree.
So.
Will be more discussion later when we actually uh wrote on the resolution.
Ah, so the resolution has not been voted on yet, correct, okay, that's what I wasn't understanding correctly. Um so should I wait until then to talk about it?
No, no.
No, it's your chance.
So my piece is that I think it should remain hybrid, because there are many people who are either immunocompromised themselves, or a loved one, or someone they're close to a lot is immunocompromised, and so they can't come here without risking the life of their loved one. But we should still allow them to be part of these group discussions, otherwise it kind of discriminates against people who might be very severely affected by decisions made by this board. So I feel it's very important that it remain hybrid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Lorenzia Argon.
Thank you, so I'm gonna call his, his comments. And I would say it can be difficult to run hybrid meetings. I know I have run hybrid workshops and, and classes, and I have attended classes and so on. And so it is difficult, but when there is a will, there is a way. And I think we all agree on that. And you have to consider that the whole family is involved when somebody comes to the meeting. So when a parent comes, the children, you know, somebody else is taking care of them. And the house has not been, yeah, the commute to come here, there are people staff from the, the district that don't leave like a couple of blocks away, they may leave half an hour away from here. So asking them to come to spend an hour commuting just to come to the meeting is a little bit much. Uh there are other barriers, as I mentioned, transportation, not everybody has a car at their disposition just to come here. Uh the ability levels, so it is possible that somebody with a wheelchair, who uses a wheelchair, will not have the ability to just come down anytime, no? And yeah, I know it's not anytime, it's every Tuesday, but you know, still, it's, it's a lot. There is an economic burden, if somebody doesn't have the transportation, do they expect, do we expect them to get an Uber, get a taxi to come here every Tuesday? No? Um shelter, I already mentioned, health reasons, not just that, not just COVID, but in general, you know, you have a cold, and what if you have a flu? There are many reasons not to be able to come. And it's not just uh not allowing people in the conversation, but right now, actually, I would say that the access is not fantastic, because people who are in their house, who want to share uh their opinion in the conversation cannot do it. No, like today, the, the chat is, is so label, right? People cannot, yeah, so they are not really participants, they're observers, and that is not yet full access. So what I want to, to, well, what I'm begging you to, to consider is that there is access that was gained throughout the pandemic, and uh these groups have spoken highly about that, and also highly or very strongly about the loss of those, of those benefits that the pandemic brought in terms of access to meetings like this, that were able to, to, to be done on Zoom, or yeah, whatever, open meetings. Um so if you close that access, really this becomes a very unwelcoming and avoid and classes environment, so please do consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the powers.
Hi, everyone, I'm missing Steve, so you might not recognize me. Hey. Um I just wanna thank the district for seventeen years of collaboration for the Kids Discover the Trail program with the Discovery Trail, which I am the director of, and Steve's um the, the director of the Ithaca Public Education Initiative. We both work really hard to coordinate the program each year um and raise dollars from local foundations, corporate sponsors, individuals, some donors in this room, Dr. Brown, me one. So I, I'm really excited to report that we've returned to in-person this year, um so children were taking buses, thanks, Chris, for all your work, and and Dan too, we had some, we had some emails and text messages. Um it, it was a, it was a really challenging year, but everybody pulled together to make sure that every trip happened, which is unprecedented in a time like this, I think, especially considering the constraints of transportation. Uh we started them down last week, so we're all set. But I just wanna thank everyone for, many people in this room who have been involved more than usual, and the patience that it took to get back to in-person trips on the part of teachers and students. This year, we were also able to launch a new initiative to reintroduce field study for students and teachers, and it's called Teachers Discover the Trail, so I hope that in the future we can continue to provide this professional development opportunity for teachers to visit the sites before they bring their students and learn more about the program, and um it helps the Discovery Trail educators make tighter connections to curriculum, so it was a really, really wonderful um opportunity that we saw given the new staff in the district who had never taken a Kids Discover the Trail trip before, or even um some teachers never taken a field trip before as a student, so uh that just underscores the importance of field, field study for students. Um exposing children from all backgrounds to the opportunities in our community, which are many. Um we were able to raise um and contribute seventy four thousand five hundred and seventy six dollars this year from local foundations, like I said, corporations, individual donors, um between IPEI and Discovery Trail. So those dollars supported students um getting back into the museums and the libraries, and we have, um the evaluation is ongoing, but I'm happy to report that we served almost twenty five hundred students this year. So not our pre-pandemic totals, but certainly more than last year, and um on behalf of the Discovery Trail and IPEI, because Steve couldn't be here, I would just like to give you all um huge thank you, and a warm reminder that you're all welcome at any time um to join the trips, because I think it's been really incredible to be witness to the appetite for field study that's come from the challenges over the past few years of not having those opportunities to get students out of the community, so. We're doing great, and next year, um we look forward to expanding again to all, serve all six districts in the county. We were reduced to four districts, for those who are interested, interested. Um all of the districts in Toptus County are expected to resume full participation, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Back.
Thank you, IPY.
And next we have Diana Cole.
Yeah, um it's great to be back, it's been a long time since pre-COVID. But just so everybody, not everybody knows, so I am a marriage and family therapist in private practice for over three years, and have been advocating for an election, elective uh to help students learn healthy relationship skills. Um it's a primary thing for, as you know, probably in twenty twenty one, um the divorce rate went up twenty one percent, and the teen suicide rate went up fifty percent. So and there's been more and more emphasis on the mental health needs of our students, and so this would provide them a prevention for anxiety and depression and be able to have those skills, and we're not taught how to parent anywhere either. So I just wanted to do an update, because I go to the curriculum committee, and Eldridge has been a great support for being in contact with the Relationship Foundation, which has a curriculum to teach students, and is doing in many schools in the Bronx right now, and many other schools, and we actually, uh he and I and the doctor Melissa, I don't know how to say the last name.
And Doc.
Yeah, and the school nurse, all attended a professional development uh by Zoom, so that I'm just you know, I'm so enthusiastic about providing this uh resource, and then the elective pilot course and the healthy relationship skills, so I just wanted to give you an update about that, and hopefully a lot of support. And uh thank you for hearing me and uh being behind this kind of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um Chris Horstman.
All right, all right, I got some things to say, so I wanna say, is that all right? Is that all right, Bill? All right. So for those of you, the very few that don't know who I am, my name is Chris Horstman, and for the last six years, I have been the president of the Employees Association, right? Well, that all changes in two days, I am no longer the president. And the reasoning behind that is, I am leaving this great district um to move on, right? But I, before I go, I have a few things to say to the board, to each and every one of you, and then a few exec team members around the district. I wanna say to the board, specifically, Marira, Eldred, and Robert. Marira and Eldred, you guys came for the first time in my entire presidency to negotiations, right? You guys came, and it was eye-opening to sit down with board members and discuss a contract, right? To discuss a five-year contract with us. And let me say, in the end, with the help of all the board members, and Robert, I know behind the scenes you did a lot of number crunchings and a lot of help on that, we got an amazing five-year contract. We really did, and I thank you, Dr. Brown, superintendent, um for everything in that contract that's gonna help, hopefully, recruit and retain service staff members across the district, which we are, as everybody here probably knows, the backbone of the district, right? I mean, we're the first ones in and the last ones out, right? So really, getting people to come here and creating that inclusive and divisive district where we can have students learn and employees work. I think this was the great step in that direction, right? So I wanna thank you for that. And throughout my six years, right, I've been doing this a long time, and I, you know, I walked up here thinking, I wanna be nervous, you know, I wanna be nervous, but I'm speaking from my heart, I only practiced this like twenty-two seconds ago over there in the chair, you know? We've done a lot of great things, right? We've, we've had our contentious moments, we have, all of us, right? But we've done a lot of great things here, and I think it gets forgotten, and it gets pushed down, it really does. We've done amazing things. The chief business officer helped us bring dental and vision to the district. We brought the health insurance to our district from the consortium, which we have now have better control over, right? I don't like the title Chief Human Capital, whatever that nonsense is, I'm gonna call him the Chief Director of Human Resources, whatever that is. We have grown a problem-solving method where everything is not grieved, right? We sit down and we discuss problems regularly. And I wanna challenge that that continues long gone, you know? The new leadership, when they come in here, I want them to have that same feeling that I have about the board and the district as I do, right? And that's gonna have to be continued that way, so that we can continue to grow, right? So I like the fact when I call the deputy superintendent, she answers and discusses with me problems. And, and that has been amazing, to reach out to people that are in extremely busy roles, and they answer, and they deal with the problems. It may not be that day, and it might take multiple emails over the course of months, but it does get resolved. It truly does, and I know that things constantly change here, right? But you know what doesn't change? The service staff, what we do, we do the same thing every single day, right? And having the support of the board, and having the support of the district is really important, and I hope that I don't have to come back here in a year or two and see that it is falling aside and falling away. So I thank you all, and I'm gonna miss most of you. I'm gonna miss all of you, I'm gonna miss all of you.
Well, uh no one can follow Chris, but is there anyone else?
Uh no, there's somebody else on the way.
What follows Chris are board responses?
And I go first.
Absolutely, you're.
Uh because um Chris, the first time that I met you was long before, well, years before, I had the, the great um satisfying experience of being part of the Employees Association negotiations with you. The first time I met you was on a professional development day uh where employees from every part of the district participated in various schools, and, and the board member, I went to what was going on at LHS that day, I live across the street, so it was convenient. And Chris and I were in a small group together. And if, if you don't know, Chris is, is a bus driver, and well, as being, you know, president for years of the uh of the Employees Association, and I just, I was so impressed with you and so grateful to have had that intimate experience with you and a bunch of teachers, and I remember, you know, teacher's aide um in the group, and I don't remember exactly what we were talking about, but you know, it had to do with inclusion, I think, and um and to have people from different experience, you know. And, and to have people from different experience, you know, different roles in the district and then also different backgrounds sharing, we shared personal experiences. And I just, you know, I don't remember exactly what you said, but your deep caring for the children of this district was so apparent. And I just valued that having had the opportunity to meet you and to see the kind of person you are. And when I saw that your topic was goodbye, I was like, oh, please don't tell me Chris is leaving. And then you did, you told me you were leaving. So we will miss you and you have been such a role model in the work you've done in this district. So you have a legacy here. Just with the, of course greatly appreciate IPEI and KDT. It's amazing work that, as Beth talked about, it requires so many people to make that endeavor happen. But I think that everybody who's involved in that, Chris too, I think really takes such pleasure in seeing, you know, the fruit of their labor and the experience that our children have. And, you know, I thank the folks at IPEI and KDT and then all the folks in the district that helped make it happen. As to the question of hybrid meetings continuing, we'll be discussing it further, we'll be voting on a resolution. I think, you know, you'll hear the board express their thoughts on it before the vote and then the vote will, will determine what happens. But I have a sense you'll do happen. And then Diana, you know, you're absolutely right about the need for, for students to have more and more nuanced understanding and learning experiences having to do with relationships. And I'm wondering if with the, and this is something that will come back to the curriculum committee, I think, maybe to facilitate. But the high school is undergoing a big change in scheduling. And I'm wondering if that might really be the first real opportunity to make a pilot actually happen.
Chris, I did not have the chance to meet you before, which I regret. I hope that you are going to something that you will love and thrive in. I was so impressed by your words and impressed by your collaborative attitude. I can assure you that the, the collaborative spirit of the board will not change with regards to all negotiations and supporting all employees. Everyone is so important. And happiness and satisfaction in your job is, you know, one of the two or three things that's most important in life. And, and the more financial security that can come with, the better for, for everyone. And, and we are doing our best. And I, I am also sorry that you're saying goodbye. I, I wish you well and I know that you'll really thrive. As far as, as the, the hybrid versus in-person, I just want, I just want to give a little history here, just a reminder that prior to COVID, in-person participation in any school board meeting or committee meeting was mandated by state law. That's, it's not a local thing. It was you are in person or, or you are not here. COVID has, has shifted that. We went to all remote, we went to hybrid as much as possible. The, the requirement that at, at least a quorum of the board must be in person is again, that's going to be a new, that is a New York State mandate. I personally think it's a good one. I think that, that board members interact better with each other and with our constituency when we, when we are in person. On the other hand, your points about accessibility have been echoed by many emails we've received. We have not received a single email that said, oh, no, make us come down to the board room if we want to say anything. So I'm personally in agreement with you. Kids discover the trail, IPEI, it's a gem. Your words about bringing kids back in person and then getting them out into the community. I mean, it's like two years now. And I, I watched what happened to the kids in my neighborhood and the kids in my local school when they had to go online suddenly and how they have flourished in getting back into in-person interactions and how I think all families and kids appreciate so much more those, those personal, those personal interactions and being tangible rather than on screen, which does not necessarily refer to a kind of board member.
So Didier, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Um, Didier. Yeah, I did, I'm sorry.
How is it interesting? I apologize, but just to clarify also, thank you for coming down. The resolution and the vote is, is procedural and we're reacting to the emergency meeting law that went into effect from Albany because of COVID. So that ended, so now we have to have a resolution in order to do it. So this isn't anything that us as a board or a school district are implementing and saying, oh, no, we don't want to do this. It's just a procedural thing, we have to review it. And these fine folks who sit on policy kind of tweak Albany's language and, you know, kind of make it Ithaca's own to better serve, you know, our, our taxpayers, our residents and to make it more accessible. Our ultimate goal, as we had conversations, was to be as accessible as possible. So I just really want to take a moment to, to put that out there. Because I do think there's a little bit of misconception out there that we are voting or doing this resolution as a preventative measure, which we're not in any way, shape or form. But thank you for coming down and we wholeheartedly agree with you. I think Pat said, in no way have we heard, oh, no, make us come down and hang out with you. You know, and I think last week, our last meeting, Rob was talking about board attendance and we were having a conversation and I was that holdout in my basement after working, you know, fifty hours a week with the public and have to come down to a public meeting. I was like, I, I'm done. So I get it and thank you.
Could I?
Yes.
So I thank you for letting us know that. And I think there have been many, many miscommunications throughout the years between the, the board and the public. And it will be very helpful if as much as possible, you could have explained that prior, no? I don't know how the wording has to be done or, or what, but saying, hey, it's okay, you know, would, would not have the panic reaction that maybe you had.
And I, you know, you're absolutely correct because if I think back to when this resolution came up, it was very structured, not even legally, but Albany language because it is a declarative, it's a, you know, so you're correct. But it is also a discussion and we, our ultimate goal is to also have the full board here so we can hear from everyone. But thank you, I appreciate that. Read my own writing, that'd be dangerous. Beth, Discovery Trail, thank you so much. I think everyone knows that the value it adds to our district is, is incredible. Chris, I wish I had met you sooner. And I could echo what everybody else has said, but I just want to thank you and appreciate you because the word collaboration, and I'm going to get on a soapbox here, but I'm just going to say it. We've gotten criticism as a board of being too collaborative, too in lockstep. But I know that has been the consistent goal of the board is to break down barriers, meet people where they are and how they are and, you know, to, to create that type of relationship. Because, you know, at one board meeting, I said, a conversation doesn't have to lead to a confrontation. We can disagree, you can, you know, I think one of the biggest things that you said that's going to stick with me is not everything has to be brief, you know? And, you know.
Right.
And that's really sticks. And that, I look around this room, I don't speak for a single board member, but I can say that I believe that everyone here wants to collaborate. We want to foster those relationships and we want to, we want you to be able to walk in a room, feel welcome, know that, you know what? This may take a minute, we may not get a yes right now, but what's the common ground and how do we get there? And that's the ultimate goal because at the end of the day, we're trying to meet the needs of the children and the people who work in this district. That is the ultimate goal. And I, and you know, one thing that's eaten at me for a while now is this combative relationship that's been fostered. It's unhealthy, it's wrong and it doesn't serve anybody any good. And the sooner we can get away from that and take a step back, the better off we'll be. And you really give me hope and promise because that's the goal here. You know, we've, we've heard where it's encouraged to bash, it's encouraged to, you know, to point out any flaw and leave with that. I, I, I just don't see the benefit in it. It dragged us down and keeps us moving forward. And what you said really echoes with that because the amount of misinformation that's out there. It's, you know, we feel many convers, many questions day in and day out and we'll keep doing that and we'll do our best to really clarify the message, but also continue to collaborate. So thank you for showing up and I appreciate your energy.
Couple of words, trying not to repeat what folks have said. All right, so Chris, first time I realized, I had no idea about the complexity of your world. It's when coming down there to get to Tower one day, I sat through an entire dispatch session. I don't know what you call it, but you know, it was a morning and afternoon. Dispatches were doing their thing and I, I realized at that moment, I'd last two days in that truck. It is incredible. I mean, the amount of, every call was grandmother's moving here and this kid's lost and this one needs to eat and this bus is breaking down. And it was, it was, it was not just, you can imagine that every one of the things I just mentioned has a certain amount of sensitivity, right? Says, oh, our babies are in our family. But the pace and the urgency was astounding. And we didn't let up the entire time. I stayed in morning session and the afternoon session and after that I was like, I need to nap. Right, so that was the first instance. The second instance, I'm a city kid, we didn't have the old buses in Boston. I've said that many times. I remember one time hanging out at Cuba Heights, we were going to do some walk-through or something. So one little kiddo's got off the bus and just, he had, lay down, backpack on the ground. I'm done, just can't do it. And the kindness with that bus driver that got off the bus and played her role of parent, right? Played her role of caregiver, loved that baby back on his feet and escorted him with a smile into the building was extraordinary. We don't give you guys enough credit for the hour that you see before they walk into a building. All right, that, that's essential. Only thing I've ever seen in this district that just made me more than smile and hug somebody that much was Lily leeching under the desk of another one of our visitors to a school and saying to a little baby, you know, you'd probably feel more comfortable if your shoes were on the right foot. And so is moments, so is moments that make us. We have talked about all this fancy stuff, all big names, whatever. So thank you for your work. Make sure you tell the group that we say thank you for their work. And now that I know you're gone, I'm a little sad because we got this big transition coming up to EV buses and, and they require folks with your mindset, right, and your work effort for sure. So you better have a replacement tomorrow. Thank you for that. To the family, yeah, we feel the same. I think we walked out and seeing the world of communication and opportunities expand. And Chris, I think it was Pat who said, the restrictions weren't of our own making, they're by law. Expansion is by state law. We hope that when we decide to continue the expansion, that we won't be shut down by state law. If it happens, we might have to have some, might have to get a bus, tickets to Albany and raise some hell. Beth, so you know how we feel about you. And I just want to say, I know I owe Beth some communication because they've already taken steps at IPEI to work on what will eventually become maybe a next round of Discovery Trail efforts that involve different sets of kids. Because we know that magic may wear out by the time that those words reach ninth grade. They may not feel the same way about those kids they sat next to. So I got to read all the stuff that you've sent me together, so I, I have worked with it. And to Diana, I know she left. I'll say this to you guys with no hesitation at all. What we experienced on the phone with the folks from New York City was transformation. And she may have had a difficult time articulating it. She may have actually set us back by making us believe that this would be a one-off class. But I'm telling you, what these folks expose us to, the, the communication around emotion. I think there should be a sheet right there on the wall that addresses how they suggested we discuss frustration, how they suggested we discuss disappointment, how they suggest we discuss anxiety. I remember the SEL thing said, Lily has exposed us to before. We got into our adult need to understand the language. I don't understand, I didn't understand the difference between anxiety and frustration, right, and fear. I lost that communication in my teens. But this group took it one step further and had actual communication strategies around these emotional words that all move the unit, institution, the conversation to only one place, Dr. Brown, culture, love. We understand that we each feel a certain way and communicate that without letting our, our darker angels take hold of us. It's very difficult for the conversation to not move forward, Chris, even if there's, even if, even if conflict is inherent. So I talked to some folks in this room about exploring some things we used to do very well in this community, very well in this district, but it would behoove us with the help of Carrie and Melissa to see what benefit that group in New York, the foundation.
The Relationship Foundation.
Relationship Foundation, thank you. Maybe work while investigating webinar can help us adults and children improve the way we deal with each other, so please.
Well, if we have four more board members, we'd be here all night. But since they, right, folks, they, they voice everything, so I don't have to. But IPEI, as always, thanks again and look forward to the future. And Chris, you, you deserve a plaque. But Chris, we talked about, you know, concentrating on kids and, you know, we know that the first school district personnel that any child, most children run into is the bus driver. And before they get into their classroom, they're going to, many, many will be having breakfast and someone has to be there to make that happen. And someone cleaned overnight to make sure that, and so we're, and someone plowed the snow so we could get in or mow the lawn or, or fix the light. So we, we appreciate everything that IPEI does, the employee well. That's the union, it's, we appreciate what you all do. And Chris, I know whatever you do, it's going to be, you're going to have, you're going to do well and have, have fun with it. But thanks, thanks again. And you should, I think once again, there's, there's much, the thought is that, boy, we. And um, you should, uh, I think once again, there's, there's a bunch, the thought is that, boy, we, uh, we needed to, we need to interact with Chris sooner, right? So, but uh, know that we're thinking of everything that the folks and that you represent do every day. And we appreciate it. So, we're gonna move on and um, we actually have a student here that, um, that didn't graduate yet, right? Sorry. So uh, so we tend to student reps if you want to speak, you can.
Not really. I wasn't sure, I was told that that the task was going to be reviewed for ten years today. And I was curious, I was told there was possibly that staff were going to be speaking now. Uh, they didn't, but that was kind of my main idea being here, so otherwise I'm trying to see.
Okay. But it's a great student and it's a nice day and we hope so.
Yeah, I think I'm probably gonna leave in like a minute.
I will, I will do it next, right? So appreciate it. We will, uh, we do have to get through the consent agenda and the first item is the resolution regarding our meeting. So we're gonna, uh, we're gonna roll through and unless the board wishes to. No, uh, we're not there yet. We have to get the consent agenda though.
Oh, the consenting, oh, okay, I thought, yes. I glad you said something different.
Yeah, you never know. But um, and we're gonna bring Amanda up just for a few things here. And unless the board wishes to respond to Zara leaving, right? She gave us a thumbs up. So uh, if uh, Chris, if uh, before you do anything, just if you can move the consent and.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Pat. Now we can dig into it a little bit. I just do wanna point out that somebody said, okay, we're not gonna have facilities or finance last week. Oh, wait a minute, that was me. Um, because it was election day, what now, it was graduation day.
Graduation day.
Graduation day and, and we really didn't need to discuss a whole bunch of things and spend hours and hours when people should be doing other things, right? So, there's a few items here that probably you should walk us through. And Chris, I'm sure you're all up to date on what's going to happen.
Chris, I'm gonna just cover it.
Yeah.
Okay, talk about that.
I'm just gonna read from what's written here, so, but go ahead Amanda.
Amanda, why don't you just, uh, run it, run us through it and um, and then we.
Right. And again, if anybody has questions, Angela Jordan, Emily Shife, Aiden Wright notes. I mean, I think this entire year, we have improved the process of all of the information in each one of these items in the consent agenda, so that if people have questions and they weren't able to get to a meeting, they could see it there.
And just, just so folks know, we're coming up at the end of fiscal year.
Correct.
And there are things that have to happen for July 1st.
That's correct, yeah, right, so.
Somewhat after, but we at least have to vote it.
And actually, so, so actually by law, we have to actually have resolutions during the current fiscal year to be able to set ourselves up going into the next fiscal year on closing the books, right? So depending on how we end the year, whether there's surplus or there's deficit, um, in each of the fund balances that we utilize to balance the budget, right? Regardless, they're sort of moved out of that savings account and they're sort of sitting here. We might expend them, we might not. And so we wanna be able to have the opportunity to move them back into appropriate savings accounts or reserves, right? To be able to move that forward to the next fiscal year. And so essentially what you're seeing, um, in every single one of these resolutions, when it says to appropriate funds from, right? Um, or authorize an appropriation from, that's what we're doing is we're essentially creating a landing zone for monies if we have a surplus to be able to go to and fund, right? So 6.1 is the only one that really is just a little bit different from the others. 6.1 is actually an expenditure in this current year to pay a bill, right? So there is an employee benefit, um, uh, opportunity for us that we actually pay out of a reserve, a savings account, and we are able to sort of pay a certain amount of money, um, to, to pay for employee benefits. Um, and that's things like, you know, sick bank payout or vacation payout or things like that, right? So Angela and Emily calculate that. And so that's one that's unique. All the others, 6.2 essentially through, um, I think it's 6.5, and then again, 6.8. Um, those are all, uh, they're, they are large numbers. We will not fund it fully, but that allows for the opportunity as the board discusses this in finance over the summer. And we get sort of closer to the close of the audit report being finalized. We can make determinations as to how we want to place the monies into those savings accounts. Um, you'll notice, for example, in the capital reserve, right? We actually said, allow us to fund it up to, I think it's $3 million, knowing, as Eldred mentioned already, that we might be moving forward eventually with electronic buses and, um, having to build infrastructure there. So those are, those are just strategic moves for us to be able to authorize us to be able to move this one.
Very good. Um, but obviously questions by anyone? Uh, while you're thinking, uh, there is a personnel report with a long list of appointments and contracts, et cetera. And so we've talked about that some, that is in there as well. E, go ahead.
I'd like to hear from Amanda, your answer for, um, 6.6, which was taken from the Treasury bill. Could you explain to us and to our, um, audience the value of us having a treasury bill at 1.69% as interest rates? More care about the rise considerably?
So we, we utilize, um, and Rob, you know, I might look to you, Rob, sometimes for these things. But we actually, we have been utilizing a service, 3+1. Um, and we invite them quarterly to come to Finance Committee. And, um, what they do is they actually give us essentially trend data and they analyze market factors and banking institutions that school districts legally can invest in. We have a more limited opportunity to invest funds than, uh, just an individual, right? Because we actually are stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so things need to have a level of security to them when we invest them because we don't ever want to, um, put funding in jeopardy. So you're gonna see things like treasuries, you're gonna see things like that. Because over, over time, when you invest things at, um, for a six-month period or a year-long period or, right? You actually are able at that moment in time, based on the 3+1 reports, to generate, um, revenue that doesn't impact our cash flow, right? Because we need to be able to pay the bills each month, we need to be able to run payroll. And so everything that we do in terms of investments are reviewed, um, at Finance Committee. We review them, the reports are there online. And so you are right, there are things that are, um, increasing. We just got today, we used to work with NI-LAP and NI-Class. Those are actually, I think they're up at 2.36 right now. And so, um, I already emailed 3+1 this morning. We were already talking about next month, Alex's recommendations. Uh, we're going out for a ban, uh, coming up for the, for the project. So we're gonna have some of those monies available as well for investing. So Eldred, just like any individual, you would want a combination, right, of long and short-term, um, work. But with school district, she wants to curate with those.
Right, and.
Right, and yeah.
Mentioned treasury bills, those are different than bonds. Bonds are long-term. Treasury bills are very short-term. And 189 on a T-bill, uh, those, those roll over very quickly. And, and a ban is a bond anticipation.
That's right, and that's for the capital project specifically. That would be over, I think we do five years and then it rolls into a bond, which is the 15 years.
Right, so, so when you're doing bonds, those are the longer term. And yeah, you don't wanna lock in a longer term right now. You do if you're borrowing, when, yes, you should go long if you're borrowing. But if you wanna do revenue, yeah, you, you roll it up.
And we knew that, again, those are things that we discussed. So many times there's overlap between facilities and finance. Uh, because there was a discussion about whether or not we converted to, um, a bond at that time and the interest rates were favorable to make that decision. So, and the last time we did that.
And you're relying on the advisors to do that, not me, I'm just a member.
No, Rob, Rob is a member of the committee.
Yeah.
And we actually have, um, folks that do this, um, for our living, for school districts, right? So, and advise us.
Does very well for us.
They really have, truly have. Thanks, Eldred.
Right, so other questions, personnel report, are we good? Okay, moved seconded and no other questions. And since we're all here, I can just do the all in favor and we raise our hands. And that's everyone and I'm not just taking Dr. Brown, uh, sure you go, that's you.
Thank you for the opportunity to say. But I gotta say, saying that to you at this point in the meeting for the last 12 years has been probably one of the greatest honors and privileges in my life. But I just want you to know that. And I just want you to know too, also, uh, you made the call that inspired someone to leave their family, a community, the own community of unknown, and their entire, you know, all their friends to come to a place they've never been with no one they ever met. So I just wanted you to know, um, you've inspired me for 12 years and you continue to inspire me. And our journey's not done. But just interested to hear that from me and, uh, thank you for this opportunity to be a part of your meetings, um, the last 12 years. And thanks to the board for the opportunity to continue to serve, um, and that's something that's been a part of my life. And I, I wish Chris was still here, uh, I would say to him. He and Susan Miffett have taught me much about what it means to be in New York State and be in collective bargaining conversations. And I will, I know I'm probably violating some contract, people remind me of this when I say, "Chris, you always have a job in this organization whenever you wanna come back." So with all that being said, uh, without talking up too much, I would love to share. And, well, first, thank the board for supporting the recommendations on the personnel report. And I wish to, uh, celebrate and try to be folks, and some in the room and some that have probably watched virtually. And for our community, sort of announce some shifts and some appointments that will benefit our school community for many years to come. Well, with the person who's in the room, I want folks to meet and having not met before, meet for the first time, Heather Williams. Heather Williams has been a committed employee in our school district for a while in many capacities, as an, um, an amazing educator. Heather will be transitioning into the role of coordinator of facilities. Now, folks may know, who've been following our work closely, we have had an open position for a while um, and have been contracting out to have folks manage on a day-to-day basis our facilities, uh, maintenance, uh, grounds crew. So Heather's gonna be coming on and she has a pretty, you'll learn much more about Heather, but we're gonna highlight and feature her in a summer newsletter with some other appointments. But since she's in the room, I thought it would be great. Who's also a board member in our local community and the region as well. So she understands governance work. But most importantly, for the context of tonight, she understands facilities and grounds. And she's gonna be transitioning from a classroom to the fields and to the room class, helping the classrooms and all the way. So congratulations, Heather.
Thanks very much.
And I'll say, we, we will be putting out a press release later tonight. Uh, there will be letters going out to staff members and to community members, um, tonight as well. To sort of talk about some of the shifts I'm gonna talk about right now. We, uh, you know, Susan S. Park, Dr. S., Dr. E. is retiring. So we've been looking and searching for a new principal at WJ Martin Elementary School. And I'm happy to announce that Ms. Jackie Richardson is going to be transferring into that key leadership role at WJ Martin. So excited about Jackie, so I got you. Oh, she's not in, yeah, yeah, if we just ask her, we can talk about this. Supporting Jackie. We're gonna have Ms. Annette Schaefer. And we'll learn, people will learn a lot about Annette. Annette's coming to us, she's been in New York City, she's coming to us from Pennsylvania, she's been, she's a seasoned experience at school administrator, been an associate principal for many years. She's gonna be coming into our organization and supporting Jackie at WJ Martin. So a, so a new associate principal coming into our organization. You'll learn more about her in the press release later. A great team at WJ Martin. Carolina Elementary School has been, we've been in the midst of a search for the new principal there. I'm so excited and honored to announce that Ms. Karen Arnold, who has been in our school district for almost three decades now, an amazing educator. Probably some in the room who have the opportunity like myself to have experiences with her as a teacher. And what we know and what we've learned the last few years is she's an amazing administrator as well. Karen Arnold's gonna be, uh, the next principal at Carolina Elementary School. We're excited about that one too. Also, I want to make sure I don't leave any of these out. Uh, we will be having a leadership transition at Northeast Elementary School. While we work with the community and the staff to quickly place a process to name a permanent replacement at Northeast Elementary School at this time of the year and at this moment in time, we want to appoint, we have appointed an interim of principal at Northeast. And we are expanding the leadership team at Northeast Elementary School to include for the first time an associate principal as well. The interim principal now until we find the permanent replacement is one of the few tenured elementary principals in our organization while she's been serving as athletic director and probably, and is being, getting many accolades, one of the best athletic directors in our state, if not the nation. Samantha Little is, is an excellent elementary principal as well. So Samantha has agreed to step in at this pivotal time to be the interim principal at Northeast Elementary School. While at the same time, maintaining contact and connections with strategic oversight of athletics. While we're gonna support her with some additional administrative support in the athletics office. So for the folks out there in the athletic world, we still have our athletic director, Amanda, Samantha Little. She's gonna be athletic director, but she's gonna be primarily supporting Northeast Elementary School and for the foreseeable future until we name a permanent principal. Joining Samantha at Northeast will be Ms. Julie Humble, who is yet another longtime ICSD educator and also has had some stints in other places, but we'll be glad to come back. But Julie Humble, uh, most recently had been associate principal at WJ Martin, will be transitioning over to be associate principal and educator for inclusion at Northeast, supporting Ms. Little and the Northeast community. So we feel strongly that we have a team in place at Northeast to support the leadership transitions to a more permanent replacement in the near future. Those are the building-based administrative appointments that the board has approved this evening. Again, the letters are gonna be going out to the school community this evening and the press release a little bit later. Uh, but again, thank you to the board for your support and to the community for your patience and understanding as we, at this time, we typically do it this time of year, making adjustments and shifts in our administrative positions in preparation for the fall. Talked a lot, more than I typically do. Thank you for the opportunity.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Will we be sending something out about infield as well or?
About infield elementary school, uh, new direction? There's no, you know, we are, Miss, Ali, Ali and Granger have been stepping in and will be the acting principal while Ms. The Harrington is on medical.
But no communication necessary?
No, no more than what we've done already.
There's no, right, there's no leadership change?
No, 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 no.
But, combination. Um, well, no, thank you, Dr. Brown.
No, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for your kindness, as always.
That's, um, much appreciated and humbling. You go down there, E, do you have any opinion?
Maybe Chris is looking at the beverage, right?
Well, he's checking the ingredients, uh. So, um, so we have, uh, we have some folks that have been waiting for this item for a while now. But hybrid meeting, uh, resolution to, for second reading and adoption, so.
I will move.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I'm 11.1, hybrid meetings resolution for second reading and adoption with one change, eliminating the word permanent in the first real act.
Cause it has an ending.
It does have a, I think we're fine if we just take permanent out.
Second?
Same to my Pat. Right, um, the state has enacted amendments to the open meetings law. It's sufficient, we, the state will do what the state does, but, um, and we can clearly speak to this now. I think we'll be good. And more of your kind of policies, so feel free.
Okay, well, I would just, you know, say that, uh, as has been pointed out, nobody's disagreeing that maybe a silver lining of what we had to do during COVID has revealed that hybrid meetings offer an opportunity for much greater public participation. And that's a good thing. Like Pat has said, I also think that the requirement of having a quorum in person is a good one because I think, you know, my experience is certainly that, you know, in-person interaction among the board members is definitely more productive and preferable to, uh, hybrid participation. Or, as we had to experience for a while, totally virtual participation. So I am, I'm pleased to support this resolution.
Just some of the details that we discussed earlier, then we talked a bit, um, two weeks ago. And, okay, what does this mean for, we adopt this and if you're a board member, you have to, uh, and you're not going to be able to attend the meeting for extraordinary circumstances, that's the language. You notify, uh, the board president and the board clerk, uh, a few days ahead of time and you can, you can tune in from your. tune in from your home Zoom setup, um but there's requirements when you do that.
Yeah, uh you have to keep your camera on, um uh if your um electronic, if your connection is inadequate, you know, if you're fading in and out, then you.
Over and over again, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can't, you can't continue, you cannot um uh participate virtually without a um an adequate uh consistent connection.
There have to be five board members in person.
In person.
Uh nine-member board, that's a quorum. Um I think the intent of this law is that you won't be a five-four split every meeting. You have to have a really good reason not to be in person for the board members, but there's always that option. If something comes up and you have a sick child or you have circumstances, um you know, a sick parent, whatever, that you really can't leave and you can't really, you can't attend the meeting, but you have to notify the board and the community every meeting if you are not going to be there, you can't, you can't just sign up for months at a time saying I'm going to be remote. You have to notify every time, that's my reading. Um so we took that uh when we saw, talking about hybrid, um and so there may be board members hybrid and there may not be. But um so we can't have a situation where the public's not aware when they can join in or not, depending on whether a board member is hybrid or not. So there are always, there has to be consistency. So there'll always be a high, once we're hybrid, there's always an opportunity for public comment remotely. If we allow public comment here in person, we have to allow public comment uh virtually and folks that are tuning in, as we've done for years now. Um and all the same rules apply. Uh but so that's really the, our reading of fairly dry language is that be consistent. Um and hopefully there will be, most of the board members will be in attendance most of the time. But there's, there's carve-outs, there are times if, right, if you are traveling and if you're really not in, not able to tune in, yeah, we've got board members that have to be absent from a meeting, but that's, that's okay. Um as long as we have a forum in person and board members have obligations and that's that's uh the way, that's like, but as a board member, yeah, you have, uh, the intent is that we, we as board members uh should be attending meetings and this is an opportunity to do it in a comfortable way. As long as there's fire, anything else that anybody wants to? All right, we've hashed this out a few times and Moira, you had questions that Sean um answered for you. Um going to um about state authorities and our, our legal, so.
Okay.
I think we covered that, right? All right.
Could you please just reconfirm that the public comment will be allowed?
Every single day?
Yes.
Okay, because today it wasn't.
Because we haven't passed the re- resolution yet. We have to pass this resolution in order for that to happen.
And we couldn't uh.
Oh, you mean virtually, wasn't it a lot?
Today.
Yes, because that's what I meant about procedurally. When that ended, we had to literally have this meeting procedurally to adopt this for it to move forward.
Right, that. There have been other meetings in the past?
The last, the last one also, it, it had expired, it expired on, I think, June eight.
June eight.
June eight.
No, I'm talking about the meeting before tonight, that, that was, uh, public comment was not allowed.
No, we've had, we've had public comment at every meeting until.
We, we.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Board meeting, like, not all committee meetings, just all board.
No, in a board meeting, where everybody was trying to, to comment including me and it was not possible.
Uh, I'm not, this is the first I'm hearing of.
Can you give the date?
Remember which date?
I, I can't, yeah, I, I, yeah, I have my information, but I mean, I, I got.
We got one meeting months ago, we had one meeting months ago where there was some confusion about which platform we would use. And in that confusion, I think a lot of people were frustrated because of the date. But that was a long time ago.
Okay.
Which, which date was it, do you have?
Yeah, what day? No, I, I don't remember.
Oh, okay.
And the way I'm thinking about it was then in winter.
Yeah, because with, with this situation, it was when it ended, then we had to get the resolution, so there was a.
Yeah, no, it was before, but I, I can, some information that we should.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I have the information, I just don't think that.
And so um part of the, part of the language here, meaning if you allow public comment, it has to be, you know, it will be from both uh sources. Um as a word of it, by an open meetings law and state, that state law, um we don't have to allow public comment. You know, boards don't, don't have to do that. Um it's, but we have always allowed public comment, so that's what we do. But other boards, it's not, not written in stone, we could have a meeting, a public meeting and not allow public comment. But uh that's not really kind of the way we do things. So um, so yeah, so there will be, we have public comment at our work sessions and it's on the agenda. And we, if anyone's wants to participate, they can then as well, and those are every Tuesday. So there's work sessions of work meetings and um, but we certainly do appreciate folks that want to share information. Um. Anytime?
Do we have to read the entire resolution?
No, yes.
The motion.
Correct.
As presented, well, it's already been moved as a second reading with the one um edit. And it was seconded by Patricia, I believe, right? So, if you're good, um. And uh the one other point that Sean, Sean was tied up today with the twenty-fifth anniversary, I believe, yes. But uh as Sean uh points out all the time, policies are, they're not written in stone, they're written in um ink and sometimes pencil. And they can be adjusted at any time, the board can change, you know, adjust a policy to make, hopefully make it better. And um when you put policies in place, then policies are uh reviewed and updated and so there will be updates to this policy as technology improves and as state law dictates. But for right now, certainly we're looking at um, the policy is written and as we discussed and we can vote if there's nothing else. Are we good?
Yeah.
All right, moved seconded, all in favor, that's everyone. So thanks, folks, thank you. Um and we do have foreign exchange students' resolution for approving.
I will move item eleven point two, foreign exchange student resolution.
Second?
From a path and you can see, resolution basically states that uh found the listed uh organizations are approved by this board of this district to, and for students to participate in the foreign exchange program.
Could, could I just ask a question? I don't recall approving resolutions when this is previous years, have I just always missed this?
If you got a Stephen Jay, wanna?
Uh Kate has advised us to, um she's helped to draft the resolution to make sure we add this uh to our agenda, to approve every program that we allow our students to go through.
Who's the guards was that?
I think that, that's, we, that's quite wise.
Uh, yes, Kate.
Yes, Kate. Yeah, so we, yeah, we're, yes, we, we decided to listen.
So, so we have, so I, I haven't missed something, right? We have been doing exchanges, but we have not had board revolutions.
Right, we discovered, we discovered it when I was working with Kate and then she advised us to start doing this process.
Thank you, I mean, half of foreign exchanges everywhere.
Yes. Right.
I had no idea.
We approve foreign trips and all that, right? But foreign, uh, Pat, you're right, then, but why not take care of it tonight?
Legal coverage there, excellent, Dr. Brown, excellent, Dr. Brown.
Uh, so we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Move seconded, all in favor? That's everyone.
I don't think we do a committee update, sorry.
I think we're good.
No.
Well, um.
Nothing happened.
Well, I think we, I, I think we're, I think we're good because school's out all summer, um, well, not really, but.
Committees will be reconstituted.
Re uh reconstituted, so that's um.
How was he didn't meet curriculum didn't meet?
Not recently, no.
In June, yeah.
Uh, no, I, curriculum, excuse me, I'm not curriculum, I mean HR, math. I don't know, I was in Portugal, I'm, I'm just saying, um.
Bless you, Warren.
You're participating in a prone position when you're.
Yes.
That was because of the five-hour time difference.
That's right, it was, so at the end of that meeting, it was midnight my time, but um.
Um, the law.
I, I will say on behalf of curriculums, at least Pat and I got off to several celebrations for the wedding as the year's close and hopefully other people did. Extremely, I'm just blown away by these kids' mastery of their chosen subject from falconry to uh sea time, is that what you call it, the, the time in which a seed takes to grow?
Germination?
Germinate, seed germination, pollination to climate change, it was just, it's our elementary kids. And most of these circumstances that we got to see, it was just, I was literally blown away.
And I, I would just add that Elder and I were in the pre-K class out of Caroline and we saw a lovely pre-K um research project on oviparous versus viviparous birth in mammals.
Okay.
Which I had a really nice talk with my preschool age grandson about, and he already knew this, although he does not go to Caroline. Um.
But he will go to Carol. He will go to Caroline. Well, actually, I, I had the pleasure of the second year in a row going to the first grade poetry breakfast at Bell Sherman Elementary. And it was certainly warmed this former English teacher's home to see first graders enthusiastically performing their poems. And I came away with a lovely collection of their poems in a book, which I've been reading to my preschool grandson.
Not sure how we follow that, but so. Well, we do have one other.
We have one other, right?
Well, that, right, I mean, that's how we follow it, but one more item. And it is Sandra Ruffo, who has been a, been a board member and board member in her district and New York State School Board, well, Central New York or wherever.
No, New York State School Board Association.
New York, New York State School Boards Association. She's been involved for thirty-seven years, for God's sake, gosh sakes, sorry. Um and uh she's just looking to be nominated again and I would certainly, um she's uh attended a few board meetings, she makes, she makes the rounds and so we appreciate that.
And she also, she also attends the Bokey Board Meeting, right?
Right, exactly, so certainly she um, she's dedicated, so.
She is, um so I will move item eleven point four, NISBA area for nomination of Sandra Ruffo.
Second?
Um, um, second by E., okay, second by all, uh all in favor. And certainly congratulations to her when that uh election comes up. Uh other discussion items, anyone? This is the last chance for twenty, twenty-two, are we good? Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, school leader. Um.
Thanks to everyone for kicking us through this one, it was way better than twenty twenty-one.
We've uh, we've talked about it a little bit, but we, uh last September, um last August and September, we were looking at um folks coming to speak to us. And basically, you know, how, how in the world can you expect to open these schools and you should not do it. Um and it was determined that we really needed to. Uh it was critical that we reopen uh and not continue to delay uh and not continue to have totally remote uh instruction in the district for the benefit, so. And it, it could have gone, things could have gone another way, we might have had it shut down again. But uh, but it was consistent work. Um and I know certainly exec team members, uh building leaders, teachers, the staff, employees, moving heaven and earth to uh keep the schools clean, disaffected, disinfected. Um and, and, and moving kids in groups and trying to maintain everything that we are supposed to maintain so we could possibly uh keep the, keep the schools open. And um, and I certainly know of other districts throughout the school year that had to uh go totally remote for a week or two at a time. Um I don't know that we ever had to go remotes once we opened up, right?
Not district-wide.
Not district-wide, right, I mean, obviously there was um some buildings for a day or two, but uh but total district-wide shutdown never happened and uh that is, it's almost unheard of. Uh and it's really tribute to the work and the effort and um just, I, I even, I even hate to say the term, but contact tracing. What, what that, uh what you all had to do to do, to go through that. And I think we kind of forget of what, what it took for months just to try to keep, well, right, once we came back, well, that contact tracing went on for a long time. So uh, so that's where we started and this is where we are now and um just mind-boggling, but go ahead, Chris.
So I would be remiss, and Elder alluded to it earlier, but Rob, I want to take a minute just to say thank you for your commitment and everything you did for this school district. Um and I want to point out how you stuck it out to the end. Um, not that it's your style, you could have checked out, you do not have to be here. Um and.
I kind of did, there's, well, you did a quorum.
But, but um. You could have said, that's not your problem, but you put the need of the district ahead of that. You know, and um I, I know, and Chris alluded to it when he spoke, folks don't know what goes on behind the scenes. People don't understand every meeting you attend, the functions you attend and participate and contribute to. You know, when people ask, well, how many hours do you commit to the board? And I say, well, you're talking rob hours, you're talking real hours, you know? Um and it's a commitment and being available and a resource. And I think that's lost and, and this, you know, X amount of nights a week where we sit in front of the public is one thing. Uh but the, the behind-the-scenes thing that also goes to this, uh I wish people knew and I wish people appreciated more. And I don't want this meeting to end without me saying personally, thank you and I appreciate you.
No, thank you, Chris, it's been, it's been a pleasure. My play. Can we let people get in?
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.